City Council, we have a oral. Item three are for items for review and discussion. Item three A is Department of Community Development. Three A one is a presentation of proposed sewer master plan. Mr. McMurray?
Good evening. Um, good. Excuse me.
Happy Valentine's Day, Mr. McMurray.
Happy Valentine's. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening I have our consultant, Bert Murph with G W E S. He has come here to speak on sewer master planning, which is very exciting for the city as we need the growth of sewer and sewer trunk lines going to our new wastewater plant. Bert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time this afternoon. We have completed a draft of the sewer master plan as a planning document for the city to take forward in making some important decisions about developing growth and the infrastructure that will be needed for that. On the screen, as you can see, is the limits of our study. As you all know, are very well aware, the eastern service area of the city is currently unserved by sewer. And there is a need there as development will continue to push toward the east of the city's current infrastructure. Getting into this project, we were asked to also take a look at the city's south service area, which is currently served by the Satterfield Water Pollution Control Plant. Due to recent development in the south, specifically along the South Perry Parkway, there is a need to take a look at what will be required of the city as growth continues to come. And this was in conjunction with the city's update of the service area of Valkyrie, which will be everything north of Flat Creek. That was recently done by the city in the follow-up last year, I believe. And so this was all incorporated into a master plan specifically for growth and the needs of sewer development that the city will be confronted with here in the near future. I would like to point out that the master plan is based on a 30-year planning period. So I want to be clear with that, that the city will, has a plan moving forward as development comes and is anticipated. And that will be phased over a period of time, up to 30 years, as development continues to grow throughout the parts of the city. So really wanted to, to point that out and, and focus our efforts over that 30-year period. As you see on the next slide, it's a little bit closer view of the city's south service Currently, the south really is served by development that is east of Highway 41 and along South Perry Parkway. There's one pump station, Highway 41 South Pump Station, that currently serves existing development. And due to a lot of interest in the area, this was one of those issues that came along as we started our initial study and was asked to, what do we do in the event that our current system doesn't have the capacity to provide sewer for future development in this area? And so that's what we focused our efforts on. The south service area is defined by the city. It's roughly about 6,500 acres now. This is not all developable. It does have waters of state and some wetland boundaries. There's probably some areas of conservation that, that would prohibit development of some type, possibly. But ultimately, it is a large service area and the majority of that service area is not currently served by sewer. And so we took this into account as, as we were planning, how are we going to get sewer to this area or increase capacity of existing facilities so that development can occur? And again, this is over a period of time. But ultimately, what, what our study suggested is the existing facilities that are within the city now, that currently serve the south service area and go flow to the Satterfield Water Pollution Control Plant, will reach their capacity in the near future. And this area will exceed that capacity as development comes. So how will we overcome that? And the ultimate alternative is to divert this flow from Satterfield to the proposed East Perry wastewater treatment facility. And so that's how we focused our efforts on how will we phase sewer infrastructure to accommodate growth responsibly, as well as in terms of, of capacity and planning for the future. The next slide that we have shows all of the sub-bases and phases of development that may occur and how we will get infrastructure to those particular areas. And so as you can see with the colorful lines and the shaded areas, these are all the sub-bases that are in the south. And ultimately, what we would hope to do, let me see if I can keep this working properly. Yes, I think we're, thank you. My apologies. Mr. McMurray is going to show, Chad, he'll show where the east wastewater treatment plant site will be.
In this area here will be the east of our plant. This is out near Purdue off of the Highway 247 spur. And this will be where we're referring to this area.
So what we need for the wastewater treatment plant to operate is flow. So we will need to get flow to the plant. And in doing that, we can also serve the south service area through a couple of phases of sewer infrastructure. As you can see on the chart, the red line would be considered Phase One and the green line would be considered Phase Two. Now Phase Two is necessary to serve the South Perry Parkway area, Highway 41 South Pump Station. So to be able to accommodate development in that particular area along South Perry Parkway, the city would have to not only do the red line infrastructure shown, but also the green. The red will ultimately take Perry Parkway Pump Station off of the Satterfield Plant and send that flow to the new East Perry wastewater treatment plant. And then furthermore, as the development grows to the south, Highway 41 Pump Station would be eliminated and all of that flow with gravity feed down to the new wastewater treatment plant. There are other phases potentially as over again this 30-year period, as development occurs in the city's service area, these phases would be incorporated on an as-needed basis to accommodate that growth. So there's no crystal ball. We don't know what the future holds. This master plan is truly what, what it is. It is planning for the future of growth and how it can be done in a responsible manner to accommodate development. And so ultimately, Phases Three and Four can be done when it is absolutely necessary, when growth has reached that limit. And so four ultimate phases on South Perry Parkway, but to really get the plant operating, we really need to proceed with Phase One, which will get the immediate flow to the plant and is the highest priority of our, of our infrastructure planning is that, is that Phase One. But again, as growth on South Perry Parkway occurs, we will need to tie in all the way up to Highway 41 South Pump Station and eliminate that pump station and gravity feed down to the plant. Thank you, Chad. Moving along to the east service area. As you can see, with the real blue color there, that, that is where your East Perry Wastewater Treatment Plant is located and will be served. Roughly, there are 1,700, excuse me, 17,500 acres of land in the east service area. But after you take out conservation, after you take out wetlands and streams and boundaries, things like that, we're looking at about 8,500 acres of developable land. So that in itself is a very large number. But this plant will be able to accommodate both the east and south service areas for the city and possibly even beyond that. We were notified earlier this morning, I believe, I think it was this morning, or Friday afternoon, excuse me, that E P D will have the wastewater allocation request back to the city, hopefully by the end of the month, which will ultimately start the permitting process for the new East Perry wastewater treatment facility. So we were trying to keep our schedule as much as we possibly can. When we started out on this endeavor, we were hoping that the permitting period would be completed in 12 to 18 months. So we are in month 13. So we're getting, we're, we're staying on course and ultimately we want to keep that schedule on track for, to be complete with the permitting in July of this year. Looking at the east service area, a little more complicated than the south. A lot of basins that possibly may require sewer. But again, I, I really want to focus on, this is a 30-year plan and it will be phased over time as the need occurs. So those were, those will be decisions that will be made by city staff and yourselves on what your focus should primarily be. Currently, you are already under, or have taken on Phase One of your expansion for the east service area, and that is along Talton Road. There's a project called the Bear Branch Sewer Expansion, Phase One B. And that was to provide immediate sewer to development along Talton Road. I have a scheduled update from a contractor that is working on that project. He will be finished installing the pipeline in approximately three weeks, weather depending, and will be up and running, ready to accept sewer pretty much by March. I mean, we're, we're getting close. Phase One B, he will start on immediately after, and that is the gravity sewer on the backside that will be running up to the new elementary school, and that will be complete in July. So with all the weather that we've had, with some of the unknowns that we've been challenged with, projects on schedule and, and has been good, good to date. A few hiccups, but nothing that couldn't be overcome with the help of city staff. So that is Phase One. Phase Two would be getting Perry Parkway off of, Perry Parkway Pump Station, excuse me, off of Satterfield, I mentioned that, in the south service area, the highest priority, which is shown in green on your mountain, that will feed down to the new plant. So the, what you can take away from this is these phase improvements will be done in conjunction with one another. So you have to do Phase One in the east and complement that with Phase One in the south. And that, that is ultimately to bring that flow to the new wastewater treatment plant to keep it operating from day one. From that point moving forward, Phase Two would be running up to, along Mawsey Creek, up to the Talton Road Sewer, take the interim pump station that is currently being installed offline, and everything will gravity flow. That'll take Wind River subdivision and the majority of the flow in your north service area off of Satterfield and bringing it down to the new plant. There is a, a subpart to all of this, which is important to put out. As we're taking capacity from the south and the east north and taking it to our new wastewater treatment plant, it is freeing up capacity at Satterfield, which is extremely important because there's other development that is occurring in your west and in your north service areas that will have no choice but to flow to Satterfield in a responsible manner. So there are benefits to the city of having a new wastewater treatment plant and diverting flow as it opens up capacity within the system that you already currently have. So I did want to make sure that that was understood. Just like the south service area, there are other phases that will occur over this long period of time as the need arises and growth occurs. So we don't know if that's going to be 30 years or 10 years, but for the planning purposes, this was to be phased out over a 30-year period. So question comes, what are the next steps? Well, we've had a meeting with the city staff to review the master plan, able to draft copy. We have received comments. We are updating the master plan per those comments and we'll be ready to issue that when the city gives us the thumbs up to do so. We are proceeding as your program manager, owner's representative, if you will, and soliciting an engineer of record to design the wastewater treatment plant. We will also begin the solicitation process for a construction manager at risk to build your wastewater treatment plant. That is currently the path that we have been given. Based on the master plan, next steps, what do we need to do? Well, these sewer trunk mains in the south and the east, they, that is going to take some time. Lots of property acquisition is necessary. We need to understand the alignment of those sewer lines. We need to perform the environmental delineation work to make sure that we are not causing any harm to the environment, staying out of stream buffers and wetlands. We need to determine a, an alignment for, for the sewer infrastructure that will be installed and ultimately determine how much land needs to be acquired as part of the construction of these lines. We do not at this time have to proceed with any design or any permitting, per se, but it, it will be coming up fairly quickly. The goal that we have been given is to have the new wastewater treatment plant online by January of 2026. So that's four years away. So in that time, we will need to construct the new wastewater treatment plant and we will need to install the infrastructure necessary to bring flow to the new plant so it can operate. So summarizing the next steps, as far as your gravity sewer trunk mains, is to proceed with determining an alignment, performing the environmental delineations, and assisting the city in land acquisition for proper construction of those facilities. Any questions?
Questions, Councilmember? It's a very in-depth review of our long-range need to the city. We know those are coming at us very quickly because you can ride around in the south or the east or the northwest and see brand-new subdivisions being built out. I'm amazed at the number of subdivisions that have been completed in the last 60 to 90 days. And so a lot of construction going on, so this is something that we're going to have to address very quickly. Mr. Gilmore, what do you need from council?
Well, since we weren't overwhelmed with questions from council on this particular project, other than maybe sitting stunned, it would be my recommendation that at your meeting tomorrow, we will have a resolution for you adopting this sewer master plan for these two service areas, and then we'll go from there relative to the planning and the scheduling.
And as we go through the planning and scheduling, all of the details will be brought back to council for final approval?
Absolutely, yes, gentlemen.
As, as we go to bid, as we build sections of this, that over the, I don't think I'll be here 30 years from now, but over the next 20 years, say, the council will be the person who makes the decision on the bid, accepting the bids and those same things, and the actual expenditures.
Yes, that may, may be quite similar to what was done with the Bear Branch project that was referenced. Where we were back to you relative right away, we were back to you relative to bids that came in from the construction, we were back to you about how that was going to be funded, and that'd be the same with the, the whole process.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions about this process?
The Bear Branch is, is, we've done all the land acquisition for, for Bear Branch?
Yes, ma'am.
It's all, we're, we're all done with that, more or less.
Yeah, the pipe's going in the ground right now. We're, I had a call from the developer wanting to know if we were, how far away were we? And I said, well, I don't know, that is real sensitive since you don't have a house under construction yet. And so, but we got our part done and we're ready to accept sewer from them well ahead of the time that they'll have houses up in, in place. And so, yeah, that's all been done. Any other questions? Mr. Murph, I can thank you and the staff here for the work that you've done. I've watched you guys put this together and I know there's been a numerous, or there have been numerous changes to this as we kind of thought about what, what is the right thing to do for the next 30 years. And so I really compliment your willingness to be flexible and look at alternatives as we move forward with this project, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And so we'll have a resolution tomorrow to approve the sewer plan as presented.
That's the plan, most councils agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Item three B is the Office of the City Manager. Three B one is Forsight Group, a presentation on leveraging federal dollars for broadband infrastructure. Ms. Harden?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two guests this evening. We have Lee Comer, um, he's out of Birmingham, Alabama, and we have Doug Stoner, they're with the Forsight Group. And just as we look at sewer planning, broadband is looked at as infrastructure, and this is an informational session this evening. We don't have a request. We just want to inform you guys of what other cities in Georgia and other communities from around the country are doing regarding broadband, community assessments and planning, especially as we look at workers and just the landscape of technology. If you all watched the Super Bowl commercials last night, I'm sure that you saw some broadband and 5G commercials, as well as electric vehicle commercials. So we just know that technology is the face of the future, and we have them from the Forsight Group for a presentation for you this evening.
Thank you.
So I want to thank you for inviting us to come down and talk about this critical infrastructure, just as much as sewer. Just real quickly, I'm Doug Stoner, I am actually out of our lab office. Forsight is based at East Street Corner, so we're here, we're a Georgia-based company. Lee Comer, up here behind me, is head of our broadband practice based in Birmingham, Alabama. We have about 16 offices around the country. But again, we're based here, here in Georgia. Just a little bit about myself before we kind of get started here, again, this is informational. This is something we're doing lots of cities, both here in Georgia, counties, and other entities around the country. The reason we're here in Perry today is twofold. Actually, Lee and I had gone down to the Georgia Economic Development Association's conference in Savannah last fall, and I ran into your director, or excuse me, your economic development administrator down at the conference, as we were down here talking to folks about this critical piece of infrastructure, particularly around economic development and how critical it is for communities. And I ran into Ashley and we started talking, and the reason we started having a conversation, I'm a property owner here in Perry, my family, we own properties and just happen to be, we own with GameStop, it's out there near Walmart. We've had that piece of property since 2003. So I'm a taxpayer here in the city and been involved, aware of Perry. Also, I'm a former state senator and state rep. I used to serve, Representative Walker, he used to sit in front of me in the Georgia House back in the days. I've actually testified in front of his son in the Georgia Senate in the past. So I have connections here in Perry, so it was very interesting talking with her and obviously understanding this community here and the growth that y'all are seeing. And it's something, obviously, I've been able to watch over the years because obviously we own a piece of property here. But this issue, this infrastructure, just like we're talking about sewer, is, is equal in support to you as sewer or electrical grid or a road network or a water system, all these issues, and it's becoming more so and so, especially since of the pandemic. And I think it's made it very acute and aware for those communities who are prepared. So what I'm going to ask Lee Comer to step up here is start talking about exactly how critical this is for communities, how we're talking to communities. For example, recently, we've been working with the city of Tucker, the city of Sherwood Hill, Forsight County, just to name a few, real quickly here in Georgia. And Lee can talk about what we've done in other parts of the country too, with other communities, similar to your size and your background and other types of organizations. But again, the point of all this is, is that the information was for y'all, for us representatives, but also explain to you the opportunities you have as a community, in a sense of additional dollars that are out there, how to leverage those. And that's also, we're helping communities understand the opportunities now with what the federal government has passed on infrastructure bill. Or as it's called, I I J A, Infrastructure Investment and Job Act, just in case you get that piece of acronym down now, I I J A, of course y'all know what are this, and how those may work together to help y'all. And then finally, just, you know, I'm used to being in your shoes, I used to be a city councilman in Smollett too, so I understand the challenges and decisions y'all work with yourselves. So I'm going to stop there at this point and let Lee Comer step up and let you kind of present the presentation.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. Again, my name is Lee Comer. I'm the practice area leader for the broadband engineering team at Forsight. To tell you a little about ourselves, we're a little bit different than a lot of engineering companies, and then we do have civil, structural, landscape, architecture, transportation. We've had wireless within the organization since we began in 2003. But my team came over in 2015, and so for the broadband engineering, you can kind of think of that as the fiber guys. I came from AT&amp;T, was there for 18 years, grew up in the Bell system, so once you get into the telecommunications system, you don't get out of it. Grew up in it, have seen the way it's evolved. Grew up in it, have seen the way it's evolved over the past decades. A few years ago, realized we needed to do something different. A lot of people ask me, you know, do you have an issue with the telcos? And the answer to that is no, they just have a very different business model, and you have to appreciate that. So as I go through this presentation tonight, I want to touch on that just a little bit. Let's talk about the different ways to look at telecommunications. And as Doug had said, we've got offices across the U.S. I've done everything from small developments, private developments, resorts, big NFL cities. We've designed thousands of miles of fiber optic networks, so I've seen a little bit of everything. Within our organization, we have a goal statement, and I try to share this as much as possible because it's critically meaningful to us. What we're doing is not about just doing a project, getting paid for, and moving on to the next thing. We realize we're going into communities, we're going to change communities fundamentally. So we have a bit of a burden that comes into play with that, there's some ownership and responsibility. So our goal is to connect people, to information, to ideas, and to other people. And we've been sharing that information with people for the last few years. And I love that your logo is where Georgia comes together, because that represents the same mentality. So when I talk about telecommunications, you typically think of the old rotary handset telephone. I like to think of broadband connectivity as a little bit of a different term. So what is a connected community? Right now, because of COVID, a lot of the buzz has been about, hey, I need to work from home, I need to have internet access at home for homework, and that's been the focal point. And from that perspective, it's great that people are finally realizing the inadequacies that they've been dealing with. But it's not just about internet connectivity. All of these topics on here, these are all things that require broadband connectivity. Now, what else is interesting about this, if you find something in here that you connect with, this is something that's going to enhance the quality of life that you're living right now. These also help to ensure that business model is functional, because they're points of revenue for the network. So as you begin to look at this, and some questions you may have is, who's in charge of this? The telcos, is this a role that government should be taking over? Who are the new players in the game? How does this work, and what's the process? And I wanted to kind of touch on a few of those things tonight, just to let you see how we're dealing with this across the nation right now. So fundamentally, there are four parts of a broadband program. There's the network owner, there's a network operator, there's a service provider, and that can be multiple, and then there are consumers. Historically, the telecommunications companies did the first three collectively. So even with your bill right now, you're bundling everything. They've bundled these services as well. They design them, they pay for them, they build them, they take care of them, they provide service, they do everything. And for the last hundred years, it's been really great, and America got connected through this system. But it needs to evolve a little bit. The screen I showed you just a few moments ago with all those different services, that's getting back to the concept of a true open access network. And it does require some level of separation in the different areas and parts of the program. Now, this is just a graphic if you're a more of an invisible person, just kind of showing you how this is put together. So if you look at the far right, those are the consumers, the subscribers. And they may be using different services, whether it's telehealth, security system, some kind of utility switching and monitoring, lots of different services across the same network, going to different kinds of service providers that feed their way back to an operator, and then that goes back to the network owner. So there's four parts, and we'll break that down a little bit further. So the network owner, you're hearing the word infrastructure like you've never heard it before. And you're made here that broadband is the fourth utility. What we're saying is, just like roads and water, gas, sidewalks, this is another infrastructure aspect. Now, we're talking about conduit, fiber, pieces of equipment, antennas, those kinds of infrastructure things. All that big list of services, a lot of those already exist today, that's not the future, it exists now. But if you don't have the proper infrastructure, none of those things will be supported in the work. So the network owner is dealing with the infrastructure. And that person who funds the network, owns the network, has to understand the CapEx and OpEx within the infrastructure management. And it can look a lot of different ways. They can be completely privately owned, publicly owned, or really, we can kind of think of P3, a public-private partnership is the best way to address this. Now getting back to the telcos, what's their role in this? They have a much shorter return on investment scheme, because they have stockholders they have to report to. But in this case, we're looking at a ROI that's going to sum up upwards of twenty years. That's a long time for an ROI, but if you think about this as an infrastructure investment, when you build a water system or a highway system, you had that same mentality in mind. The network operator, this is the team that comes in and takes care of the network. And that could include a guy with a truck who rolls out and fixes a cut fiber, or does new installation, or somebody who's running a network operational center, monitoring that network. And this is the person who connects the service providers to the network owner. And I'll get into that just a little bit further. But if you want to think a moment, talk about the service providers. Today, we typically think of that as an internet service provider. And when you're building, you may see it broken down into TV or video, internet, and phone service. So those are three kinds of services. But service can be just about any kind of service. And that service provider would pay an access fee to the operator who manages that network or the owner. Those bottom bullets there, I think that's interesting to look into, because as you start to look at the way the business model is beginning to unfold, it's going to look a lot different. So again, right now, we're really heavily thinking about internet access. And you'll hear words like access, meaning is there fiber there, is there internet there? Availability, can I afford it? And adoption, are people actually using it appropriately? But before you can get into that, you start looking at, an ISP is an internet service provider. Well, we coined the term XSP, or X could be any other kind of barrier. It's not internet-based services. So if you have utility switching, that's not going to go across the internet. Telemedicine, and when I say telemedicine, you've probably heard the phrase telehealth, which is a FaceTime or a web conference, where you have video and voice. Well, telemedicine is a whole nother aspect of that, it's where you're doing remote dispensation of medicine or remote sensing. It's much more interactive, has much greater demand on the network. So if you think about aging at home, what would that look like? If you have somebody has dialysis at home instead of driving into a dialysis center? This could change the way people live. Security, you're not going to have that in a hackable scenario, which could be the internet. Even things like gaming, where the thing that you're trying to achieve there is the lowest latency possible. And I'm not a gamer, my sixteen-year-old son, that's all he does, but it doesn't interest me. But I do see the value in that, because one day, you start to think about what's it look like when people are sitting in an office and they're operating robots remotely in a safe environment, and that connection has a low latency connection, and that person, that's how they work. And again, these are not the future, these are things that already exist today, you just don't have the infrastructure to support it. And then the fourth part of that program is consumers, and this looks a lot of different ways. Consumers are people, residents, businesses, a wireless cellular antenna, a camera on the street, a utility sensor. All these things use that network. If you think about the consumers' connectivity, you know, today, cell phones are connected, your laptops connected, your clothes can now be connected, your pets can be connected, your vehicle will be connected. Everything is going to be connected. What's that connection going to look like? Who is that end user of that connection? So when we look at these four different aspects of a broadband program, you can start to think about it a little differently. The business model starts to look a little bit different. So you're going to hear the phrase feasibility study, and this gets into semantics a little bit. But feasibility, in this case, it's always feasible, you just have to find a business model that works. Because at the end of the day, is this something that you really want to do without? And Doug used the concept of, you know, the electrification of the United States back in the nineteen hundreds. Well, if you got left out, you seriously got left out. That's where we are today with broadband connectivity. So some things that we're seeing today as we're talking to different communities, and a lot of times, I go into a case just like this, and I'm being told, hey, we know broadband is important, we know there's money allocated for it, but we don't really understand what that means. So that's why I wanted to, after today, just have a conversation with you, and to start to see if you've been thinking about this. It's something every community needs to address, and every community is going to address it and define their response to it in a very different way, because every community is different. But here's a few things that we've typically seen. So a community probably doesn't have a broadband master plan. And so you've got a sewer and storm drain master plan, via a street master plan, a solid master plan, but had to use specifically and intentionally created a broadband master plan. Do you know how you want your community to be connected? Do you know what's in your community to support that level of connectivity? Now, there are other telecommunications companies, and what they've done is great, but is what they've built, is it sustainable, is it expandable, is it going to support the kind of connectivity you want? Because from a twisted copper or coaxial position, obviously it'll last even just a few more years. I will tell you, from my perspective, I'm a fiber guy, I love fiber connectivity, but you're never going to have fiber without wireless. Everything is going to be wireless-connected at some point. But for that level of connectivity in a wireless scenario, you're going to need a lot more fiber to support all those connections, so they're always tied together. So what does your community look like? Have you developed a broadband master plan? The second, looking at the lack of integration of these technologies, go back to that list I was talking about earlier, into your existing or proposed city services. So one of the things that always comes to mind, the gentleman who spoke before me talked about, hey, we're going to roll this out over time, use the pass that we're using for routing. Well, you're going to go up in the ground, that's a great time to put some duct in the ground for fiber. And the city may use it for what it's doing, you may use some kind of AMI system to operate with that network, that water network for switching and monitoring. It could be something that you can lease to a telecommunications company, lower their costs so they can come in and build more network, that serves you better. Gap number three is a need to deploy broadband technologies to increase quality of life. It's really easy, and I grew up in this era where the phone company's going to take care of that aspect. And most of the subdivisions we've seen designed, they're designed for storm drain, they're designed for power, they're designed for sewer, but they don't design for telecommunications. That's not really ingrained in the way we do things, it's always an afterthought. So instead of just relying on somebody else to come and fix that problem, as a community, having started to address and think about, what are you going to push in your communities? Is it Wi-Fi downtown? Is it closed-circuit cameras for security? Is it ITS, intelligent traffic system? All those things, again, use broadband connectivity. And then the lack of public-private partnerships to deploy new technologies. And so this is something kind of new in our space, again, go back to that slide that had the three highlights with the telco takes care of everything, this looks very different. It wasn't just until just a couple of years ago that we started to see trillions of dollars being allocated for broadband, and it's not going to the big telcos. Historically, it always has, and the government's been funding telecommunications companies for decades. That's not happening the same way anymore. Those dollars are coming to the states, and the states are disseminating those funds down to the communities. Now, those funds are great, but they're not going to be enough to do everything we need done. But it is enough to come in and partner with private equity, and have those folks come in, and together, we can start to accomplish these goals. So that P3, I think, is going to be a significant way that things get done in the future. So some of the things we talked about, and Doug mentioned the ARPA, you know, the state has disseminated half of those funds, there's another two-hundred-and-forty million, I think, left to disseminate, those are allocated by the state. IIJA, when that comes out, that should be coming out in the April-May timeframe. We're still developing what that's going to look like. But NTIA is going to hand that responsibility down to the state. The state's going to decide who gets those funds. And one of the key things they're looking for, and I'll show you the slide in just a second, is a pre-deployment plan. In my world, that's a broadband master plan. You can't just go ask for dollars for broadband, you've got to have a strategy. So this is kind of the sequence of events, how we see this unfolding. We're working with the Georgia Technology Authority, GTA, they're giving carry the banner for the state with broadband and the way those funds are going to be disseminated, we believe. That first aspect is broadband master plan. That is step one. Now, if you look at ARPA funding, you can use those funds for master planning. Cannot use those funds for assessments and studies, and that's an important distinction. According to the literature, you can use it for planning activities that could possibly go towards a broadband deployment program, so this would qualify. And once you've done that, a broadband master plan can look a lot of different ways. Or you can build out fiber to every home in the community, or you can build a fiber ring to support cell towers, or you can develop a microwave network to provide connectivity to the cell towers that you can then go connect to multi-point, to people in that community. It can come out in a lot of different ways, again, every community is different. But once you've understood what that infrastructure need is to develop a master plan, you can start working with business models. What other private equity may want to come in, what other funds we may go pursue. So that's the third case, pursuing the funding. And if you look at that top bullet, a few key parts, federal government's already allocated forty-five billion dollars with this. You hear the B, VAD fund, it's a subset of IIJA. Well, they're going to give every state a hundred million just to start with. And then, based on applications, they'll disseminate the rest of those funds. That third bullet talks about an action-driven pre-deployment plan, that's the broadband after plan, that's what they're looking for. Now, the specifics for what that's going to include don't exist today, they're still developing that. But we're trying to work with the state, go, hey, here's some things that you might want to be looking for. And the broadband master plan that we're doing for different communities today is helping us develop what that's going to look like, whether it's mapping your community for a good GIS database, if it's meeting a certain level of service, if you're going to hear speeds in megabits, you're here download and upload speeds, what are those parameters that keep changing? But one of the key aspects is, no, we don't want to build something that's only good for two or three years. This needs to be a long-term infrastructure investment. And we do believe that when they evaluate these applications, that's what they're going to be looking for. So once you do have the funding, and that's going to be a combination of some federal funds, maybe some local funds, certainly some private equity funds to put the whole project together, you can go in, you can deploy that network. And when you do, this is not going to happen overnight, this is a multi-year, multi-decade process. You have to be working with permitting, you have to be working with the city and the county, you're working with the poll owners, which is in most cases, the power company. If you're going to put anything in the air or in the ground, you're working with streets, sanitation, and other utilities. There's a lot of moving parts, and there's getting equipment, materials, construction, building these things out. All along, you're at some level disrupting that community. But once you've got this built, and that network has been put in place, what else can you do? And the last aspect is technology after plan. Now, you hear the phrase, you know, build it and they will come. And that's a really hard sell to get bank financing. But this is going to be in those cases when you start to look out, everything is going to be connected. This is a build it and they will come aspect, and a little model of the business model. You need to be taking steps today that five years, ten years, twenty-five years down the path make sense. So that's a bit of a picture of the way we're seeing different broadband models come to fruition today. Again, looking at those four aspects, there's the network owner, the network operator, the different service providers, and then the way consumers use that network.
Thank you all, and of course, we're happy to answer any questions. I think everyone's provided a hard copy of that PowerPoint presentation. I know there's a lot of information, and we just don't answer them, and everything, I understand. But we're happy to answer any questions or comments. And as Lee said, we're obviously very engaged. I talk regularly to the Georgia Technology Authority, I talk directly with Josh O'Leary, who's the director of broadband initiatives, and understanding what the state's going to be doing and what they're going to be expecting of communities in the sense of if they're going to apply for these grants once they know how much money they're going to get. And so we're, as an organization, we're in constant communication with the state to understand and help our clients that we work with, and help to understand what they need to be doing, get prepared. And understand, this money, some folks are thinking, oh, my goodness, all the money's going to come out next fall. This is not something that's going to happen immediately in the sense of overnight. What we're going to know is exactly what is the formula that the states are going to be able to receive money on. And that's still yet to come, that'll probably be here. That'll probably be here in April or May, the feds finally going to roll that out to the states. And then, at that point, the states themselves have to have a state plan on broadband, just so y'all know. And how this works is not unusual. You see this in transportation planning. So you want to come and apply for money, you must have a plan yourself, just as Lee was talking about. And then that gets rolled into either a regional transportation plan or a state transportation plan, where you're going to see the same thing on broadband. It's going to be rolled into a state broadband plan. The state will have its issues it wants to address. But if you're going to apply, that's why you need to have your plan ready, because that's going to be incorporated into the state plan in the sense of promoting funding standard through the federal government. There's going to be guidelines, the feds are going to be looking at specifically on any plan, any money in the IIJA, and it's specifically geared toward governments. As Lee said earlier, they're not giving money directly to the telcos like they have with pass. They want local governments, states and local governments to be involved in this process now to have a decision-making as it relates to public policy. Because in the past, with all due respect, it was here you go AT&amp;T and the local governments and the state really were involved in where that money went. One of the point on that with the local, and again, we work with the telcos, just so you know. We're not, we don't have anything against the telcos. But you have to understand, they're working on an ROI of only three to five years. Seriously, five years is a serious long-term investment, return investment for the telcos. So AT&amp;T, or Comcast, or Spectrum, whoever it is, they're not looking beyond five years on their investment. Well, obviously, your community, you deal with these issues. You know five years is nothing in the sense of the timeframe. So that's why the federal government and the new IIJA is insisting that this goes through government in the sense, because government can take a longer-term view of these issues and think accordingly and plan accordingly. So they're going to be asking those local governments and whoever else, as part of their plan, to be looking at other issues like underserved and unserved areas as part of the plan. And also, are you going to have affordable services for your citizens? Doesn't mean, you know, you can't have other types of levels of services, but do you have a basic phone? Like in the old days, well, I won't say the old days, but, you know, AT&amp;T or Bell South or whoever would have a basic phone plan that everybody could afford. You're going to, the government's going to be requesting that you, as a local government or whoever's applying for this money, come up with a plan, how are you going to do that? And that's where you need to work with your partners and whoever else is going to be involved. So those are some more additional items to be aware of as this opportunity comes forward. So this is going to be $45 billion directly going to the states, as I was mentioning. And then after that, the states will be the ones determining who the sub-grantees would be. So example, Perry would be a sub-grantee if he would apply. So I'm going to stop there, happy to answer any questions. And of course, if y'all come up with something later, it's like, you know, in the middle of the night, you wake up and go, I didn't ask that question. Don't call me at 3:00 in the morning. But please, don't hesitate to reach back out to us. Obviously, we've been working with Ashley here, who's been a great, I can tell you that, someone who deals with lots of economic development folks, who has a real understanding of this infrastructure. And so, you know, if you have any questions to answer, we'd be happy to come back and talk. We're just, if it was called, we'd have to explain that.
Questions, councilman, please.
Question, Lee, do we have a broadband master plan? Do we have one here?
Oh, no, I don't think, I don't think many communities. I couldn't, I couldn't name a community in Georgia right now that has a broadband master plan at all. Most of our services have been provided with the telcos coming in with fiber and stuff like that. We've been dependent totally on, you know, the private sector to provide that. So it has not been something of focus that we've had. So as this is changing, it's a requirement change for the cities, so we're just going to have to look at that.
You're a big company, Bob.
To devise a master plan, I guess you would have a committee. Who would, who do you foresee, who would you foresee that would make up that committee? Or what, what type of people would be on that committee? Would it be a conflict of interest to have, say, two people from the city of Perry on this committee to devise the grand plan? But would you invite AT&amp;T people or Verizon people to be part of that plan? Who has the expertise to even devise this plan?
Well, I guess to kind of back up before I'm going to let Lee or Doug address that too. As someone who deals in public policy as much as I have, at that point, the question is, well, we, how we operate the four sides, we kind of come in, and it was mentioned earlier by your previous presentation, as a community, you need to have an owner's rep, is the terminology for the term. What it means is have someone who works for y'all who understands these complex issues and everything. And then, to the point of what you're suggesting, which is not unusual, is that, okay, once you've got that expert by your side who is there to work on your behalf, not anyone else's behalf, to help you figure out what do you need to do next, and how to, and again, each community's different. Some communities do it differently. They do a committee, they sometimes don't do a committee, except to the community how they want to proceed. I'll let Lee, you might want to talk about that, because you've had some experience with that too.
And what we reference, you can kind of, any kind of different name, a broadband advisory committee is one we've heard before. Definitely needs to have members from city council, people who can push agendas, make decisions, things of that nature. I think it does need to have somebody who's a third-party subject matter expert, somebody like us. But definitely, it doesn't mean that the AT&amp;Ts, Verizon, CenturyLink, Sprint, whoever else, if they're in the community, let them be part of this. Again, I want to reiterate, they're not the enemy. This isn't us versus them, you know, the scenario. It's just a different approach. And it is evolving, and you have to go with that and understand that's how things are going to look for. So I think have them part of that. But within the community, I think community members need to be part of this. So in my mind, I go to, who are the people who see the lack of connectivity? So healthcare providers, maybe elementary school principals, because they're dealing with kids who need to do homework. You have local employers that have this kind of thing. Certainly, business owners who could benefit from this kind of level of connectivity. Anybody from EMA, power departments, police stations. I think you should create a group of those kinds of folks. Going back to that list, I should probably pull that up. All the different services you could have. Who's your GOAT to point at that community? Let that community voice drive what that looks like and contribute to that factor. The thing that we would do as a subject matter expert is, we can tell you, you know, what's this going to cost? What should the network look like? How long is it going to take to build it? What hurdles are you going to have to jump over in order to accomplish these goals? But really, we don't want to come in here and tell you what you need. We want to show you what it's going to cost to get the things that you defined that you need. One of my favorite questions I ask employers, my clients, my children, what do you want to do? And that's something that as a community, you're going to define that for yourself. And then everybody else can come and help you understand how to achieve that goal. So I think definitely a broadband advisory committee to develop and begin to develop that master plan.
In our area, we have four different entities. We have citizens of Houston County, we have citizens of Warren Robins, of Centerville, of Perry. Would it be, it seems like to me, it could be at cost purposes if everyone didn't have the same master plan for broadband.
So speaking from that direction, so a lot of times, you're going to see just a small city come in and do something. We're working with cities, private developers that are, you know, 250 homes being built, counties, multi-county or regional committees. I'm working with some state level right now. In my perspective, and I'm always going to look at it mathematically, what's the smartest way to approach this in order to achieve the goal? Because at the end of the day, it's always going to be about money. So we're working at a regional level, that's the most efficient way to accomplish something. So even within a, say, a county, you have different cities. Every city has some slightly different needs. So how can you come together and have the greatest benefit to that entire county, even though they may have some slightly different needs? And what's applicable to that community? So right now, the reason that you're seeing so much infrastructure investment coming into play is because it does not make financial sense to go to the country. In rural areas, business model will never work. You've got to have that level of investment to get to a rural area. Once you look ahead and you start to think, okay, well, we can use federal funding to lower the cost of building network, but then what are the funds made on that to subsidize monthly fees? That could be part of it. Or when people really do cut the cord and they're no longer using television service, they're getting everything off of the screen or off of the private service. Those are going to change those business models. So what you're referencing was how different communities, they could be competing within a region. How do you need to play better together? Find out what your specific needs are and how those dovetail together in a big regional model.
Well, when you mentioned rural areas, I mean, we have, you know, just places, just, we have Perry, kind of like this, and Houston County all in between. And in some of those little figures of Houston County, broadband service is terrible. And, but yet, it's very close geographically to the city of Perry's, which is why I've been thinking, and some of those are huge businesses. They're in the country, but they're huge businesses. And if the county had a different plan from the city, I just wonder how effective that would be.
And I kind of go back, I'll get weaving for just a little bit, I'll maybe draw a better picture. So if you do look at a county, first thing a fiber network designer is going to think about is, I'm going to have to create a fiber ring, and maybe multiple rings. So those pockets of density, if the business model doesn't work, how do I connect all those different pockets together? Okay, well, by doing that, I now have created infrastructure in that rural area. I've now built something I can build off of. And that can mean, hey, we go in, we put in a tower, we serve, connect to multi-point, and we provide service to them. Now, it may not be as fast as a gig. You're still going to get 100 megabits down, 10 megabits up, which is a lot better than the nothing that you have now. And it starts to fill off of that. So to me, that's why looking at regional format, it starts to fill those gaps a lot faster than trying to do everything completely individually.
And just real quickly on that too, I mean, this is not rocket science. And what I'm talking about is, we have done tons of different types of infrastructure, via water systems, sewer systems, natural gas systems. There are models that we've done over the last hundred years of how do you do things like in some communities? To your point, maybe the county, a city and a county works together, but you provide water and sewer service into the county, even though it's not in your jurisdiction. It's working out those, you're right, working out those arrangements in the sense of who's going to provide the infrastructure and how it's going to work. You go back to electrification, the comment I was making earlier. I refer to this as the electrical grid of the 21st century. In the early part of the 20th century, where I live up in Smyrna, Georgia, to give you a perfect example, so we're very close into Atlanta, so George Power in the early 1900s got power, you know, ran electrical grid to Smyrna, but they would not go to Marietta, the county seat. Now, think about that for a second. The county seat was not going to be off of electricity. So that's why you have all these MEACS, Marietta Power was created, because they understood in the early 1900s, if they didn't have an electrical grid, you'd say goodbye to economic development. And so that model of the MEACS, but then, of course, we have the rural areas. And of course, that took until the 1930s, until the federal government agreed to do the rural education infrastructure. I remember having a great aunt who was 12 years old from Dalton, Georgia, lived in Woodville County. She remembers the day they got electricity in the farm, and that was in 1936. The point is, you're seeing a 30-year thing. I won't say it won't be exactly the same, but these models, the infrastructure may be different, but the concepts are very similar. So there's ways of doing this creatively, and it's been done in the past. So it's not like, oh, my God, what do we do here? There's models that can be used and everything. One point I didn't want to make, and this is something that kind of surprises people. So everybody talks about autonomous vehicles, right? And we've been working with communities, particularly metro Atlanta, on autonomous shuttles. So you hear about this stuff. And there's a particular shuttle called Ali, not pushing the brand, that's just one that comes and likes to do demonstrations. And up in Atlanta, a lot of communities are looking at this type of technology, right? To run from their downtown to a heavy railroad station, or something like that. Or a campus like the college campus have an autonomous shuttle system. But here's something you need to understand, this is time of the technology. Technologies here, the infrastructure is not in place to handle it. So that Ali shuttle, every 10 minutes, it has to ping a portal and exchange one terabyte of information. It's 1,000 gigabytes instantaneous. Because the shuttle can't stay autonomous forever, okay? It has to communicate. So the question we ask, so we're dealing with communities right now, they have Tropolus CID, to give you an example, outside of the airport in Atlanta. They want to do an autonomous shuttle, but when they realize they don't have the telecommunication infrastructure. And they have, they already know they don't. So they're asking us, just to let you know, we're doing that to them, to figure out what do you actually have? Could you actually deploy this technology? And of course, the answer is, no, you really can't. So these are issues, understanding whatever you do, do in the future, in terms of your infrastructure, is understanding the technologies and the needs, and really what's about, it's called bandwidth. Can you handle all this telecommunication and all this data? And so, you know, that's the point too, that you have to be looking at and understanding. Right now, you could not deploy a sort of autonomous shuttle, one terabyte. An autonomous vehicle, you know, the idea is going to be a living room with wheels, you know, so in your car, and maybe, you know, watch TV or whatever. We're talking up to one petabyte. A petabyte is 1,000 terabytes. So not trying to overwhelm anybody, but understanding, the future is here. The technology's here. The question is, can you deploy the technology? That's really the question. So I'll stop there after any other questions, and I got other things to talk about tonight.
Our best choice of doing something about this, how do we go about it? Do we hire your company, how much you cost, et cetera? How long does it take to get up and running?
I'm going to let, I'm the director of business, Melo. He's the broadband guy, so I'm going to let him talk about it. Because I don't make, I don't want to speak.
Absolutely, we would love to come and do this with you guys. We've done this quite often, so it's our area of expertise. Typically, it's going to take around six months to really develop a really sound plan. Now, we've modeled that in different ways for different communities, based on how much research they've already done internally themselves. You can go and look at some FCC data. It's not the best data that it'll give you a starting point. If you've already done any kind of demand aggregation or survey within the community, that's always helpful information. But actually go in and pull streets, pull residential address data, business address data, start to model that to a geospatial database, model that, method, start to design your route plan, much like you saw with the sewer system earlier. Once you've designed that, you can start to understand what your capital expenses to build that would be, and what your operational expenses to maintain that operate that would be. And that process usually takes around six months. So one of the things we're telling folks now, how do you pay for it? When I started doing this five years ago, municipal broadband was not a big topic. And the question was, we don't have any money, and we don't want to create new bonds, and we don't want to raise new taxes. You don't have to. You can use your ARPA dollars for this. This is where it starts to get even more interesting. So you could use ARPA dollars to do a project like this. It's going to take, I call it, four to six months, just for good measure. That's going to align with what's happening with IIJA. We're going to start to release that information in Q2. We'll start making some decisions in Q3, Q4, and disseminating those funds next year, I believe. So those things start to line up there. Well, whatever dollars that you've contributed to ARPA for your broadband master plan, if you do move forward with deployment, IIJA is going to require a 25% match. This is atypical. You can actually use your federal ARPA fund as part of your 25% match for your IIJA federal fund. So you still haven't touched tax dollars yet, or not your tax dollars, if you put it that way.
Your local tax.
Yeah, your local tax dollars. So that's, that's one mechanism for doing that.
And I do want to make comment on that, so. So no, so no one runs off. So the Treasury Department this fall said you can use your ARPA money for broadband master plans. They didn't use that quite term, that's what they were talking about. I've been talking directly with the state, and they're getting, they're getting indications out of Washington that they're probably going to say, you could take your studies. It's not unusual, we've seen this in other things, where you've done preliminary engineering on something, you're going after federal dollars, and a lot of times, you can count what you've spent in your local dollars toward the match. May not be the whole match, but it could be part of the match that you do. That's what we're being told initially, is waiting to get this officially with the US Treasury Department, that the ARPA money that you spend on a pre-deployment plan, as it's called in the IIJA, that money can be used as toward your match. So you can actually use federal dollars to match federal dollars, which is definitely a little different than in the past. So that's, that's what that's about and everything. So these are the things that we deal with, that we, you know, we're constantly in communication with, that we're able to bring to our clients and say, be aware of this, this is what you may want to do. Here's your opportunity to leverage and take advantage of these opportunities coming out of Washington and out of state.
Other questions, council? I think this is something we're going to have to study and understand and what options are available to us as we move forward.
Well, but that sounds like a good question for you.
No, I don't.
We will be continuing to look into it.
We will be continuing looking into it. Do you have any other questions that you have?
We're on that tomorrow.
Mr. Stone, thanks. Mr. Connor, I appreciate you guys coming and sharing this with us, and we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 3B2 is the outline of the city's Black History Month banner program, Mr. Stone.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was asked to, it's in this meeting tonight, to present a summary of the Black History Month banner project. As you all know, February is Black History Month, and starting last year, the city of Perry decided to honor this moment, this occasion, by starting a Black History Month banner project. The mission of this project is to celebrate prominent African-American members of the Perry community who have made notable impacts to our communities. So some of them have been first prominent positions in the city, so first doctor, first lawyer, also first for the city of Perry employees as well. So honoring our first African-American downtown manager, our first African-American special events, I'm sorry, leisure services director. So notable titles like that. One of the procedures for this, it's an application process. This is a free application that is hosted on the city of Perry's website, on a special page specifically dedicated to the Black History Month banner project. This can be found year-round at perry-ga.gov/BHM. Applications typically have opened in the spring after the current banners come down. And then we do have a deadline of September 1st, which allows our team to review the applications and go through them and get them prepared, because it does take some time to transform them into the banners that you see on the streets. We have all of the banners hung before February 1st, so that deadline gives us time to not only design the banners, but also print them and have public works actually hang them. The application fees for this project, there are none. The city of Perry's Black History Month banner project aims to be inclusive of all socioeconomic levels. So there are no fees to apply in consideration, and if you are selected, there are no fees for your banner to be printed and hung. There is a Black History Month committee that meets. We meet on a monthly basis, if not more frequently, to not only plan and review the banner applications, but any affiliated projects, so things like getting that information on the website, getting that information on social media. And then additionally, we have also taken on the planning of the Juneteenth Freedom Day Festival, which was started last year and will be continuing this year and broken into a two-day project. If there are any further questions or if further details are requested for this project, I would be happy to be the point of contact for that, and my information can be found on our website under the Special Events tab.
Just one question, Mr. Turp, who else on the committee goes to Black History Month at this time?
Yeah, so this year's committee is comprised of Ms. Lyman Grace, Jasmine Thomas, our downtown manager, Ms. Alicia Hartley, our special events coordinator, and myself.
I have a question. Do we have any other banners that feature individual people?
Like throughout the year? I'm not familiar with that. Typically, my department doesn't oversee the banners that go up throughout the city. This was a specific project that we assisted with. So the other banners that go up throughout the year, aside from the, I've only been here three years, so from the ones that I've seen, I know that we do feature, you know, photos that have been taken at events that have, you know, real people that live and play in Perry. But I think as far as specific individuals, to my knowledge, no, but I could be wrong.
I was just thinking that, you know, if we instituted a program for something like Hispanics or any other group of people, women, I don't know, anybody, that we would need to have that same big schedule for everyone?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I know lots of other cities. Whenever we first started reaching, researching this, like I said, I'm not really familiar with banners. This was my first time working on a project like this. Did research what some other cities have done for similar things. And a lot of the information that I used to put together, you know, our first round of banners last year was actually pulled from veterans' banners, where cities would honor notable veterans in their community around one of those, you know, military patriotic center holidays.
Other questions?
These banners stay up a month. I don't know what's the time for them.
Yes, sir. They stay up from February 1st to the end of the month, so 28th or 29th, depending on the year. And then we actually do reuse the banners at the Juneteenth Festival. So they don't actually hang up outside on the street poles, but we hang them in the interior of the building. So they're actually showcased twice throughout here.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Turp. Appreciate the information. Item 3B3 is the Downtown Development Authority's Development Financing, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I was going to snag this microphone and just stand next to the screen, if that's okay? My eyes are failing me, and I also like to stand next to it to flail around my arms and that type of thing, if you're paying attention. Okay, you heard your joke. If you can hear me, I'm sitting here. I wanted to get with you all this evening to have a discussion pertaining to downtown development financing and the Downtown Development Authority here in Perry utilizing financing as an incentive to attract and promote development in the downtown district. You will all remember, I believe it was November, early December, there was a discussion right here pertaining to a project that the Downtown Development Authority presented to you all. You know, in hindsight, we should have provided this type of information prior to that. And, you know, we'd be sure to get information to you all sooner and take you, hopefully, starting tonight, though, a bit of an education process on what exactly it was that was being proposed to you all that evening. Also, too, in a recent Downtown Development Authority meeting, the chairman of the Downtown Development Authority brought up a question pertaining to, what is it that Mayor and Council are expecting of them when it comes to downtown development financing? And there's a bit of uncertainty with our Downtown Development Authority board members right now pertaining to their ability to finance projects, who they see that project being beneficial for the downtown. If that makes sense? Left my clicker. Beautiful. Wanted to take you through just a quick synopsis pertaining to Downtown Development Authorities and what they are able to do pertaining to financing. Show you some project examples of how Downtown Development Authorities and cities have incentivized development their downtowns utilizing financing. And then bring up some possible frameworks through which you all may be able to work and allow the Downtown Development Authority to provide financing under certain circumstances that you all would approve. I'm sorry. Official Code of Georgia Title 36, Chapter 42, commonly referred to as the Downtown Development Authority's law. And this sets out what downtown development authorities are and what they can do. And the four bases for downtown development authorities made form in the state of Georgia, you can see here. I'm not going to read these, you can all read. But generally, promote downtown development, promote a vital downtown, energetic area with all sorts of trade, all that type of thing. And two of the items that are brought out in this is the ability to finance projects and the ability to issue bonds. So when the state set about dividing local governments with this tool, because that's really what a downtown development authority is, a tool for you all to promote development in ways that you are not able to. When they set about creating this tool for you all, they saw it as something that could provide for this financing mechanism through which you all may be able to work, your downtown development authority board members may be able to work, that could really bring something to downtown that wasn't previously offered, if that makes sense. In the Title 36 code, there's 24 powers that are set out that the downtown development authority has. A lot of those are specific to financing and the ability of downtown development authorities to finance projects. In particular, these three stick out, to finance, to borrow money, and issue revenue bonds. That's basically the swath of what they're able to do. And essentially, it's pretty much anything. They can go work with a bank, they can issue their own revenue bonds. You know, there's a whole world available to them that you all can't do in working directly with developers to locate a project in the downtown development district. Simplified, but I think a good point. This is specifically pertaining to our downtown development authority. Because we need to draw a distinction between downtown development authorities, ones that are creditworthy and ones that are not creditworthy. Creditworthy downtown development authority has assets. They have a guaranteed revenue stream through which they're able to go out and pursue their own financing for projects. They are a separate legal entity, they can do that. Our downtown development authority is not creditworthy. So if they want to go out and finance projects, it actually has to have your all's support. If you remember back in early December when you presented that project, your all's support in order to go out as a creditworthy entity or backed by a creditworthy entity and provide financing to a project, if that makes sense. They do not have a guaranteed revenue stream, they do not have assets. So the downtown development authority working to locate a project would ask you all for support, assuming you all saw it's a viable, good project in the city, would enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the downtown development authority. The downtown development authority, there are three ways, there are promissory notes, but we don't really talk a lot about those, because they're kind of out there. But work with traditional lenders or issue revenue bonds. The proceeds of those bonds can go to a project. The project, through a project agreement or a lease agreement, would pay back the downtown development authority, which it did, pay back the lender or the bondholders, if that makes sense. So again, very simple. It's just acting as a mechanism to work directly with a developer, and that's something that you all, the city, cannot do. Some examples, and I'm trying to capture some big ones, some small ones, some rural ones, some metro ones, but give you all an idea about how downtown development authorities have used financing to incentivize projects in their downtowns. This is Richland Rum Facility, Brunswick, Georgia. Just a beautiful early 1980s building here. It was vacant for a while. The downtown development authority was working with a project, Richland Rum, to locate in their downtown. They saw an opportunity. And you can see here, the actor kind of has a Cuban theme going on, pretty nice. They were actually able to go to a bank, borrow $850,000 to acquire that building, do some renovations, that type of thing, and locate Richland Rum in that facility. Richland Rum has a lease agreement with the downtown development authority, pays the downtown development authority, and then pays back the bank that provided them with the funds to do that. And of course, it's backed by the city. This is a big one, Parsons Alley. This is a, I forget acreage-wise, but it's a destination, restaurant, and retail district in Duluth, Georgia. Quite a sign if you ever had the opportunity to go see it. This used to be like old warehouses, surface parking lots, things that weren't really bringing a whole lot of value to their city. So over time, the city and the downtown development authority went and acquired this land, acquired some buildings, and worked with a developer to bring approximately 30,000 square feet worth of retail and restaurant space to their downtown. This is about a $10 million project. They worked with a developer who brought $1 million to the table. The city threw in $3 million out of the general fund, and this is for the public improvements in this district, right? That's the sidewalk, that's the landscaping, the streetscaping. They have a parklet sign, it's that type of thing. City owns and maintains those. And then the downtown development authority, with backing the city, got $6 million, issued $6 million in revenue bonds that went, combined with the owner equity, to the project for the renovation of existing buildings and the construction of new buildings in the district. The developer located in those buildings, filled those buildings with tenants, and pays back the downtown development authority with those proceeds so they can cover the revenue bond issuance debt service. Does that make sense? Okay, go ahead. This is another big one in the metro area. You know, the whole Peachtree industrial corridors, just, you know, this city, all sorts of stuff going on. Very interesting, very progressive DDA's up there. Sugar Hill, I believe, used to be a relatively small town. It's big now, obviously, but they saw the need for a downtown district. They wanted, basically, to create a downtown where they did not have one. So they went out and created what they called the epicenter in their downtown area. It's about 200,000 square feet of mixed-use, it's commercial, it's a public use facilities. I believe there's some residential in there, restaurants, retail, that type of thing. This one here in particular, it's about a $50 million project. The city contributed $7 million in SPOSS funds. Switch over here real quick. The SPOSS funds, again, like the Sugar Hill project, went for the public areas, if that makes sense. They have a beautiful amphitheater back here, streetscaping, landscaping, all that type of thing. And the downtown development authority, backed by the city, issued $41.8 million in revenue bonds that went for the construction of the project. And they have, it's all leased out, and the proceeds from those leases go to pay back the revenue bonds. A smaller one, but a really nice one, and you'll see here in a second, it uses a lot of financing mechanisms. I wanted to show you this in particular. Clarksville, Georgia, 2014, 2015, I believe it was, there was a fire downtown. Gutted a lot of their old historic buildings, right in their town square, very sad. However, the city and the downtown development authority saw an opportunity, and they actually went in and redeveloped these two buildings. There's a building over here you can't see. There was a building here, it was too far gone from the fire, so they came in with like a nice, you know, infill park alleyway improvement type of project. I wanted to show you all this one because it essentially utilizes the entire swath of financing mechanisms that are available to downtown development authorities, just to remind you all, this stuff is out there. So you can see that the downtown development authority went out in pursuit of bank loan backed by the city. They state federal historic preservation tax credits, which are super lucrative. And, you know, I believe some are coming to you all, but Historic Preservation Commission could facilitate some of that stuff for us possibly. They actually received a redevelopment rate from the state, Georgia City's foundation loan, downtown development authority revolving loan fund. The city threw in, again, on the public improvement stuff, the big alleyway project back there, and the streetscaping and some other things. And then a loan from the city to the DDA to help with some of the renovation and build out stuff. So it was about a $3 million project in all, and they really brought the kitchen sink or whatever to make it happen. Really, just a really nice project. A small restaurant project, the city of Cordelia had a restaurateur, but I think it was operating a catering type deal. They wanted to open a storefront, and they actually came in and helped finance this project. It's not the right photo, but $300,000 bank loan the DDA went out and got at 2.5%. Issued it to the restaurant 4.5%, so basically charging kind of the finance fee, making a little money there, which is great. You know, as a downtown development authority here in the city of Perry, I would like to get to a point where we're generating revenues to become more of a creditworthy type of organization. But, you know, they weren't a restaurant, they went out and got a restaurant. This is a big redevelopment project in the city of Newton. The University of West Georgia was looking for a location in Newton. They had a whole hospital that I believe was not really being utilized, or wasn't being utilized to its potential, and they saw a redevelopment opportunity. $16.5 million project, you can see the players here, I believe they're doing like some nursing, medical type stuff there. So the hospital was a player on that. And then the city brought in 1.5 million SPOSS for the project. And the downtown development authority went out to a local lender for the rest of it, helped it build out. And then their tenants, the University of West Georgia, was actually paying back the bank loan on that. So a different way of going about it, a really nice, I guess, public-private partnership. Just some examples, some projects, there's a number of them out there. But moving forward, it really is a viable tool for the city and the downtown development authority to have in their toolbox, and I hate, you know, I'm sorry about the cliches tonight, but that's just kind of the DCA in me. It is a good tool, and if it's okay with you all, if you're generally favorable towards the utilization of financing at some level, whatever that might be, for projects downtown, I would actually ask you all to allow us to go back to the Downtown Development Authority Board and put together some sort of policy, right? That provides a little bit of guidance, you know, provides a, something that the downtown development authority can work with moving forward with projects, but also provides you all with some assurances about how that project's going to take place. And essentially allows you all to approve a process and a framework through which financing can be offered to downtown development authority projects. I looked, go back, please, if you don't mind. I looked at a number of different ones at the current municipalities using across Georgia. Some kind of recommendations, some stuff that's out there, you know, I don't know, this stuff over here, not super big. I want to focus on financing, but a redevelopment, infill development focused. Having some sort of threshold where the private partner that you're working with has to have a requisite level of skin in the game, if you will. Not sure what that might be. Not sure what that might be. Perhaps, you know, they have to bring at least $250,000 or 20% of the total cost of the table, something like that, that's kind of a common threshold that I've seen out there. Job creation. You know, so just core economic development stuff that you're looking at is private investment, job creation. And if they meet the threshold that you all established, then you all say, yeah, you know, we can do some financing to a certain extent, if that makes sense. And we can structure this all sorts of different ways, but making sure that they're providing the downtown development authority and you all with sufficient documentation to show that they are a viable project, and that they will bring benefits to downtown, they'll bring benefits to the community. Go ahead, Joe. And based on our discussion back in December, I wanted to make sure that we hit on some things that I think you all may want to see in this, should we choose to move forward. Some safeguards, right? If you're all going to back the downtown development authority in these financing projects, we can totally put in place these types of safeguards. Percentage or total project investment cap. So again, what sort of percentage of the project would you all require of the project? Is there a certain, you know, we're not going to do more than a million dollars ever for any project. Is it, we're not going to do more than 40% of a project? If that makes sense. Some sort of threshold that sets where you all are comfortable with. Feasibility study, fiscal and economic impact studies. A lot of this stuff's pretty common in industrial development, but we could tailor it, you know, for smaller projects in the downtown district. You know, we can get Ms. Newby on this with the sound MOU and project agreements, and make sure that we have in place projects that are the types of projects that you all, the downtown development authority, want to see in our downtown development district. The big thing, clawbacks and performance agreements. You know, there are certain performance measures that this project's going to have to meet in certain timeframes, or they have to start paying the money back. You know, so it's not just providing money or financing for projects without any sort of agreement in place. You know, there's all sorts of measures and things that they would have to meet. It's very similar, actually, to the Commonwealth Building Project, where they had certain time limits in regards to when they had to start construction. It had to be a certain type of project, that type of thing. So we can really fine tune that for something that would provide you all the level of assurance that I think you're looking for in this. And then something too, a state participation requirement. If it would make you all, as a city, more comfortable, certainly go out and explore what options are available to the state. You know, you saw the little downtown Clarksville project. They went all out, and had all sorts of state programs to come in and help them with their project. But if the project is able to go out and have the state say that, yes, it's a viable project, we're going to give you $250,000 in downtown development revolving loan funds, that hopefully would provide you all some assurances that, okay, you know, the state's in on this, we got the state, we got the project, let's do a little something for the project as well. So you could say that, you know, the state has to participate in whatever sort of project you're looking at financing, if that makes sense. Go ahead, Joe. That's what I got for you all this evening. I hope this was somewhat beneficial. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have. Generally, I'd like for you all to have a discussion, and generally determine if it's something you want us to continue to move forward with. You know, if you want us to go and maybe look at some policy type stuff and bring all back to you all. The downtown development authority board really needs your guidance, and hoping to get that from you all.
All right. Couple of questions. First question is, I know it's obviously an issue of economic development to go out and recruit businesses, restaurants, et cetera, and so forth. Would economic development be involved with the DDA in this process, like going forward?
Our city's economic development function?
Yes.
It certainly could be.
I would like for it to be, I guess, that's my two cents. And then also going forward with, I guess, three cents instead of just two. My general feelings on this. You know, when the project was presented to us last time, and basically 100% financing, I was very hesitant about that. You know, you said the phrase tonight, I believe Miss Spineless Grace said it when it was presented to us. And I always love when I can quote Miss Spineless Grace, but, I know, yes. But for a prospect who have more, or majority, or most, whatever adjective you use, skin in the game, I think is important. That being said, I am not philosophically opposed to the DDA going out and, you know, looking for a prospect. And if that prospect is something that we as council and the DDA and city feel will bring of great benefit to our downtown, then I'm not opposed philosophically to some structure of public financing that's been discussed, being included in that overall structure. Those are my feelings. I certainly welcome other council members' input and discussion on it as well. Add that I would think we would do that on a case-by-case basis, as opposed to any sort of blanket, you know, statement one way or another.
I feel that that's a good presentation that you gave to us. And one of the things that you're saying today, I think you need to have a guideline, a policy that you were making a statement, something to guide them by. Most times, with that question going on, downtown, I tend, what I just seen today, we'll probably be backing it, you know what I mean? So we need to have something in place to support, encourage, motivate, but yet still, we're going to have a guideline, you know, to do what we need to do, you know what I mean? So we're going to have a boundary, a cap, or whatever you want to say, that we can work with downtown development to get the project moving forward, but yet still, we got a guideline that we got to maintain on doing it.
I think my thoughts from what you said tonight, when you talked about DDA's being creditworthy and not creditworthy, I would think that, I would like to see if there's a policy that their number one priority would be to become creditworthy. When they are able to operate within their own funds, even though their funds are also taxpayer funds, even except for maybe when they've been able to make a little money on an increased interest rate or something like that. That they are the ones who, I just feel like sometimes we might get ahead of our skis if we borrow money, but we don't really have the money to pay it back. If it became necessary, we're going to have to go somewhere else to get it. So I would love to see them be creditworthy. Prior to what's probably popular opinion, I love the DDA. I think they can do great and exciting things for downtown. But they definitely need a policy before they come back with a project. And I'm not opposed to them selling any assets that they have, or asset that the city passes on to them, so that they do fill up their own funds, even though that's still taxpayer money. I feel differently about it once it gets into their hands, because they're the ones that are going to be in charge of how it's dispersed and what it's dispersed for, and they're going to oversee whatever type of project might go there, or else they don't, you know, make the love to these people. I think maybe a good place to start, if they have their own funds, would just need to complete that alleyway project that's been going on for a few years now. I don't know if, I don't know exactly who took that on, if it's Main Street or DDA, but it's a longstanding project, and I just, I'm just then curious about how other DDA's became creditworthy. I'd like to know that. And then my favorite project, and the ones that you presented us, was the one for the university campus that was doing nursing. And the hospital put in money, and the university put in money. If University of Georgia, or Middle Georgia College, or whoever is around us now, Mercer wanted to put a satellite campus here that could benefit all of our community and all of our citizens, I can see our participation in that. Or a medical facility, I could see our participation in that with a hospital. I don't see us in need of, in our downtown. I would have to associate it with need. And so that would be a bottom line for me. I'd have to associate it with need. But I think there are a lot of wonderful things they can do, and I just want them to be funded, you know? That's just where I come down on that.
I am interested in, first of all, you guys are doing a great job with the small loans that you're already making. And I think at this point in time, it is time for us to start looking at a financial structure that we can do some of these things. So I would like to see some kind of policy in place as to have that moving forward.
Other comments or thoughts?
Well, I would just say that I would think that the DDA is currently frustrated right now because they are, I guess, you know, basically without structure as far as what projects they might can try to attract here. But I would applaud the efforts of us having what Robert just mentioned, some sort of policy. Because I think when you start freelancing unlimited with no guidance, it can turn out bad and hurt feelings from other downtown businesses can happen. So I think the more structure we have, the more, you got to have 20 employees, 15, and you got to have 20% of business. I think the more those we can create, it would protect the DDA as well and give them some guidance. So I would look forward to that presentation.
I agree with Dr. Carl Britton. I would just add one thing that I would, for me, I would not want the DDA to feel limited in terms of the type of project that they felt confident in pursuing. Despite, you know, if we're going on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, maybe it is the university deal like Ms. Peterson mentioned, or maybe it's a restaurant, or maybe it's, if any type of project that the DDA feels is going to add that much more viability and generate that much more traffic to our downtown, I think is worthy to pursue and for us to consider.
Other comments?
To summarize what I have heard, is that you would like to have Mr. Smith put together in conjunction with the DDA, a set of guidelines that would be acceptable to this body as far as limits and percentages of ownership and job creation and things like that, that would be the outline for them to be looking for various businesses, or educational opportunities, or medical opportunities that would come to our downtown. Is that close to what I've heard? Okay. Mr. Smith, would you work with the DDA to come with some policy guidelines that they feel like they could work with, that would give them some flexibility to go out and look at various opportunities?
Yes, sir. I'll get some back to you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your work on that. Interesting things going on around the state. Item 3B4 is considered proposal to amend our annual leave. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, there will be no PowerPoint presentation of this discussion. I have provided to you a suggestion from administration. As you may or may not be aware, we have been approached about considering making some type of payout or no cap payout or annual leave if an employee dies on the job. And as I state in my memo to you all, that is very understandable. It has a very strong emotional tie, but singular type events in and of themselves are not necessarily the best way to establish a policy. So what the administration would like to do is bring up that demon again, paid time off. However, there are some significant differences with that. If you are agreeable, certainly not expecting any decision from you at all, if you are agreeable even just to continue the process, then the administration's recommendation would be we notify all the employees, we have hearings, come back, you know, similar to what we did before, then you can make your determination. One of the major differences with this proposal, there are several, but one of the first ones is, is that it does not do anything relative to employee sick leave. That remains exactly the same. Whatever balance they have, when you enact it, that's the balance they maintain. They still use it, we don't mess with the sick leave at all. You may remember that was one of the concerns that was expressed to you last time we talked about this.
Their sick leave balance.
Yes.
Because we'll do it with the sick leave program itself, and it'll become personal time off.
That is, that is correct.
It's just the remaining balance that they have.
That's right. Whatever that balance is, whenever you, if you accrue it, whenever you determine the effectiveness of that is. In lieu of not having any, and continue to accrue sick leave, there is an increase in how much they will increase in their PTO leave. You may remember we had talked about that before. The employee will be able to use the PTO for any particular purpose. So the employee could use it for sick if they wanted to, or time off, whatever the case may be, would be their time. It will accrue, you may remember, attached to is a couple of exhibits showing the differences, but we will make a distinction, which we do not have right now, between the, we currently have standard employee, or standard time, which generally revolves around 40-hour employee. And then we have fire. This proposal, which we had before, would be add another calculation for accrual for police officers, since they have to work 12-hour shifts. So in other words, they would accrue at a greater rate than you would have. There is also a proposed increase relative to the PTO payout amount. You know, when an employee separates from the city, regardless of what the reason is. What we think the benefits would be, and I'll grant you this, at least is the administration's perspective on this right now, but the first one is, it does recognize and give some accountability for longevity. In the schedule that we have there, there are a couple of other areas that have been added for a greater payout, depending on longer years of service that you pay from the city. It sets aside, sorry, I can't get it on. Anyway, employees can be responsible and stewards for their own time. It raises the payout totals on separation, whatever the reason of separation is. Like I mentioned before, it increases the accrual rate for 12-hour shift police officers. And it does, as I mentioned before, give the employees the opportunity to decide how they would like to spend their particular layout. Now, it is important, I want to point this out, that this proposal does not recommend a total payout of PTO time for everybody, whatever they have accrued across the board. The reason it is not for everybody the total amount is the city cannot afford to have that type of liability. We increase it, in other words, we phased an increase with it, with this proposal, but we cannot afford to have a complete payout of your accrued annual even PTO time, at least at this time.
And that's never been the city's policy, has it?
That is correct. It never has been. There is a difference in perspective, which I totally understand. From the employee standpoint, it can be perceived, or possibly understood, that the city is providing X amount of annual leave and X amount of sick leave for me. And as I accrue it, if I don't use it, I should be able to have some type of access to it, or complete access to it. or complete access to it. Historically and currently, the city's position as the employer is that, yes, you accrue these items, but they are basically like insurance. They're available for you to use under particular circumstances, and there is a cap on them. What we're proposing to you makes a slight modification with that, moves towards an opportunity for an employee to collect more at their separation time, but still protects the financial integrity of the city about maintaining a cap. So like I said, you have certainly reviewed, giving us some questions. If there's no immediate objections from the council, then our recommendation would be we proceed with the usual process of explaining, going through with the employees, having hearing for you all, where they can have whatever comes they want, and then you can make your determination of what it is you'd like to do, if anything.
Questions or comments?
I mean, I like the, the last idea. You give an employment, like you said, you give the input, like you were saying a while ago, what's going on, and then after we hear comments from everyone, then we can make the final decision, yeah, going forward.
That's right. I mean, you all would have to make the final decision no matter what.
Yeah.
But we do, but we do recommend the employee.
Right. Would like to hear from you.
Thoughts, comments, questions? Mr. Gilmore have your authority to move forward with employee discussions. Please move forward, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you.
I don't know, I'll ask Dr. Albrecht when he gets back, but I don't think he has a problem with, you know, just following up on that request. Well, while we're talking about leave, let's just move into 3B, and this is our military leave policy. I think this is a little easier since it's mandated by the federal bill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief in my remarks. What we have before you today is a proposed amendment to the city's military leave policy. As you may know, federal and state law both provide certain regulations to employers relative to civilian employment for military service members. So you have U.SARA, that's the federal law, that's the Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act, and then you have Georgia Code 38. So these two statutes provide us the guidance that we need in order to move forward in how we treat military deployments, military reemployment, and then military leave. And so in reviewing our personnel manual, one of the things that jumped out to me was we'd allowed our policy to become outdated. And so that was a, a concern of ours. And so what we put before you is a policy that has since been updated to reflect the current realities of U.SARA and Georgia Code 38. Particularly what this revolves around is an increase from 15 days to 18 days for paid military leave, that's the state law, and then also reemployment rights for returning service members, and that's a federal law. So I'll, like I said, I'll be brief in my remarks, I think that's really the essence of it. The language that you see before you was pulled primarily from U.SARA and from Georgia Code, and it was reviewed by our personnel law attorney. So it's been about it.
Any questions? If you have none, I recommend that this be put on our agenda for a vote tomorrow evening as something that's, that came out of this discussion. Okay?
Thank you.
We'll do that, Mr. Gilmore. Appreciate it.
All right, done.
Thank you. Item 3B6 is a parking study proposal. Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, you may or may not have been aware of some of the issues surrounding parking downtown currently. Proceed the real. Uh, but for whatever reason, it has become a bit of a topic lately with the downtown merchants and property owners. And I know myself and a number of other staff members have received a fair amount of input on that topic lately. So following up on that, and then following up on some questions from you all not too long ago pertaining to our parking study and whether it was up to date, that type of thing, uh, you have it for you for your consideration, a proposal from the Middle Georgia Regional Commission to conduct a parking study for us. I, I don't know how familiar you all are with the current parking study, but it was completed in 2018 by the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. I thought they did a very good job on it, very thorough, and they came downtown at different intervals, different times of the day, and did assessments pertaining to all, or all the park, all the public parking downtown, identifying all the load parking, and then when it was utilized and when it was not utilized. For me, the hard thing away was, even during feed times, like during lunch between 10 and 2, the parking, the public parking was only 46, 48% occupied, so less than half of it was actually being utilized according to the study. So I took that as a, not a parking issue. But again, you know, I'll admit that things are different than they were in 2018. Downtown has grown, and there are a number of new businesses or soon to be new businesses downtown that overdrive, and a lot of people killing traffic. So for that reason, to make sure that we as a city are operating with this current data available to us, that's, that's why I wanted to get this proposal to you all. I, I guess a little bit about the proposal, I apologize. It's a very labor-intensive process to actually do the parking study, walk around, look at the things, like you said, during different intervals and all that. They're proposing to be here in the fall. This is when they can basically have the labor force available, they have a lot of their stuff going on right now, so they couldn't do it during the spring. During the summer, school being out doesn't really represent, you know, the, the real , I think, traffic that you typically see downtown, like the fall and, and winter and spring might. So getting it here in the fall, letting them do their assessment, putting it all together, getting y'all something by the end of the year.
But it would also include, I would hope, the opening of some new restaurants, which will add to that parking stress, as well as possibly, you know, more events being held at the views, which would also give us an opportunity to really look at the impact of the new businesses downtown as well. So fall, fall seems like a reasonable time to do that. Council members? Do you have any other items? Gilmore?
No, sir. If Council concurs, we'll just proceed with it.
Yes, I, I think that's a good idea because, like I said, get a lot of feedback on it. There's not enough spaces to park, especially when we have food to provide, you know, I mean, so that's what the things are there. People are looking at what can we park, and the location to park. I think the state of the city, can we find a location that we need to, as people, accommodate people. As a city grows, we know we're gonna have more activity coming downtown, and that's gonna be something that going forward, we're gonna have to make sure that we can kind of put things in perspective, that we're able to apply to park. Like you mentioned, some places might not be with 40%, but then, that might be on a particular time, but then the rest of the time, we might be short of parking. So we need to make sure as we do our study that we can consider that going forward.
Yes, sir.
Now, please move forward as planned for the fall.
I'm sorry?
So please move forward as planned for the fall.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Albrecht, while you were out of the room, there was discussion relative to amending the annual leave policy. The other council members agreed to move forward with surveying the employees and getting their feedback and holding feedback sessions so they can discuss with council before you move forward. Are you okay with it? Thank you. Item four, our council member items, Ms. Pine and Bryce? Dr. Albrecht, Mayor, where are you? Ms. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
One item, Mayor. Since Mr. McMurray is here with us tonight, I was wondering if you might just take a minute and update us on where we're at with the piping out in New Haven and Stone Bridge.
Thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Okay, from, actually, Ansel and I had this discussion earlier today, and Piles Plumbing has finished installation of the isolation valves this week. That will, in the event that there is a main break, a water main break on Stone Bridge, then a very minimal amount of lots will be, I guess, affected, because we can isolate out of that water and get water to still go into New Haven subdivision, from either from Gird Road or from the Sadie Heights subdivision off of the King's Chapel. However, if there is a, a main break along the main feeding into New Haven, that would still affect the New Haven residents there. So this is a effort that we've been in to reduce the impact of the entire neighborhood, where we've had to shut down the neighborhood and fix these main breaks, and we'll greatly help if there is any main breaks.
With the circulation is also in place, is it not?
That's correct. So the subdivisions are now looped, but regardless if there was a main break before, there was, there was instances we had to cut it off.
Well, I really believe you're gonna get great results from the looping factor to take the pressure off of the systems, and so I got my fingers crossed that that's the way it's gonna work.
My heart takes, thank you. Any other questions?
The looping impacts Sadie Heights, I mean, excuse me, uh, New Haven as well?
Yes, uh, because it will, the isolation valves will allow the feed, water feed to come into the New Haven if there's a break east of the line or west of the line, the isolation valves will allow the water to feed through.
Okay, and what was the statement you made about if a different main broke, wouldn't...
There is a main coming from Stone Bridge into New Haven. If there's a break on that line, then there's, that still shuts down New Haven subdivision at this time. But the isolation valves are the best option to provide water.
Has that line had a lot of issues in the past?
No, not recently. Not been a corporate. The corporate is on Stone Bridge, on game trail.
Does that what's caused the outages in New Haven?
Yes, they're, they're connected together.
Okay.
Of being able to isolate those in Stone Bridge now.
That's correct.
Will allow you to still serve New Haven if you have a break over there.
That's correct. Okay, yes.
Very good. Just want to get that clarified. Any other questions? Thank you. Item five, our department head staff items, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, I have one item and would like to get clarification or affirm, affirm from council. This deals with the COVID policy of the city. Council may remember that there are two, in administration's interpretation, two benchmarks that we watch. The first one are the number of cases in Houston County, and the second, and much more major one, is the number of hospitalizations that we get in Perry. Going through on this most recent Omicron variant that we had, it was obvious that the number of cases and the hospitalizations were dropping, but had not quite met that number that council had established. However, from the administration's standpoint, taking a look at the trends, both in the state of Georgia nationwide and in, and in Houston County in particular, it appeared to be appropriate with that positive trend about releasing the mandates we had for masks and those type of things. However, the numbers were not exactly the same as what council had adopted as its policy or its cut point. So I'm requesting from council that they affirm that the administration is allowed to proceed using, based on that data, that we use those as benchmark positions, but not absolute numbers. For example, the difference would be that, you may remember the notice went up, go back to the process, every Wednesday or Thursday, you all as the elected officials and all the department heads get the numbers relative to COVID. And those numbers determine whether your council policy remains in effect or not. And the remaining in effect in general terms are the mask mandates, signs that are up, so on and so forth. Well, the numbers were dropping, but they weren't quite at that level last Wednesday. But based on my, my understanding of these numbers as benchmark deals and with trends and everything, it appeared that it would be okay. So the COVID policy, council's COVID policy was canceled. Now, if you still want to wear a mask, you could, so on and so forth. Highly likely that when we take a look at the figures this Wednesday, they'll be within the parameters that you already even talked about. And so therefore, would like to have council affirm that, yes, the administration does have that flexibility, not huge amounts, but that flexibility. You may remember that the basis of our policy that we use in the city is not tied to what the federal government does. It is not tied to the CDC, it's not tied to any other outside group. It is tied to what the hospital situation is in Houston County. Because that's the item that most affects all our residents. If you have high hospitalization, you cannot get any of the other type of services, and there's, there's problems with that. So that's, that's what our basis is. So I'm just asking if you affirm that that makes sense and we'll proceed that way.
Council?
Thank you.
It's good to use common sense once in a while.
Well, and also I think it's important every once in a while to, to go over these things, you know, because they're, they're particularly on such a, sorry, a little soapbox deal coming up here, but particularly on such a major item that affects the nation in so many sectors, in so many different ways, in so many different positions that people have. I think it's important for us as Perry to state, here's why we do these things and what they mean. And so therefore, which I think is very important with council's policy, is we're not getting into the issue about whether you are vaccinated or not. We're not getting into the issue about what your religious beliefs are or your concerns as a mother, you know, of medical things and all that type of stuff. We are only taking our standpoint on what we do to do two things, maybe three, but definitely two. The first one is to protect our own employees. And as far as I'm concerned, as the manager, I think that's imperative, because if we don't, we're gonna have major problems delivering our services. We cannot provide, for example, fire protection if we have a whole shift off because of COVID or COVID exposure. The second thing is to protect and take care of our customers. You know, if you're coming in to pay your bills, you know, whatever the case may be, who we deal with, uh, the public, we do that. But our basis goes back to the third, and maybe the most important thing, is relative to what we can do based on documented areas that could affect all our residents and citizens. And that's where we get back to the issue about the hospitalization. So therefore, we don't keep up necessarily with what the tests are, whether you're pro or con, you know, any of those type of things. You know, we just base it on actual documentation. And if our hospitals that serve Perry are running into problems, you know, because of the COVID, then we do what we can to support our hospital and our citizens.
Thank you, sir. And I think you got your agreement from the council.
That's my understanding.
Very good shape. Thank you. Mr. Smith, anything else to say?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Newby?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. King, anything? Mr. Worthington? Chief Lynn?
Nothing.
Chief Parker?
Recognize her.
Mrs. Fitz? I'm getting it out here. Ms. Warren?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Nothing.
Mr. McMurray?
Nothing further.
Nothing further? You don't have to think of her, she's white. I think that's everybody. I think everybody's had an opportunity. So is there anything else to come before us this evening? Hearing that at this time of the day. Hearing that, it's time to entertain a moment of adjournment until our, uh, pre-council meeting tomorrow afternoon at 5:00.
So moved.
Okay. All in a second. Please, in a second. All effectively, as the KODA is running. We do stand adjourned.